Let me welcome to order, please rise for the political leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will call them. Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Fish?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trankis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Madam Vice Chair, we have a forum. And Madam Vice Chair, we did not get the, um, did it sixteen?
No minutes?
Oh, no, we did this sixteen. What is this?
It's a computer.
Oh.
I didn't mean to trip you up. Let's get it out of your way.
That's okay. Madam Vice Chair, we have the April sixteenth. The journal finalized, but not the April twenty-third.
I move for the approval of the journal for the meeting of April sixteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen journalist approved. So that's, that's the only one, June? That's the only one, okay. Yes, sir. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Madam Vice Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, third district.
Receive, file, refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, uh, the Department of Planning, and the county counselor.
So ordered. Item number two, second district.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, all districts?
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Vice Chair, I apologize, um, that appointment does not require council approval. So it would just be a receiving file, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four, fourth district?
Receive, file, the change of order be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, sixth district?
Please hold on the order business.
So ordered.
Item number six, seventh district?
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, first and fourth district? Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number eight, first district? Same motion, and that will be the order. Item number nine, fourth district?
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number ten, seventh district?
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eleven, fifth district?
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twelve, all districts?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number thirteen?
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number fourteen, first district?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number fifteen, first district?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number sixteen, third, fourth, sixth, and seventh districts?
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seventeen?
Please hold on the order business.
We have no add-ons this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
Report of the county executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening marks a fresh start for our community, the county council, and for me. For the past, for the last few years, we have worked together to bring more transparency and accountability to county government. I want to salute my friend, Councilwoman Erby, who was the first among us to sound the alarm when she sensed corruption, and I look up to her for that. The quest, uh, she began years ago led us to this council working across party lines in historic fashion. The quest became a cause, and the result is the opportunity we now have to transform county government from top to bottom. Now we will begin that important work, and I hope we can do that work together as a team. As county executive, I will treat the council with the respect it deserves. The charter requires me to attend council meetings, and I will. The council invites me to provide a report, and I will. The interests of good government require me to collaborate with each of you to restore integrity and honor to our county government, and I will. So let me tell you what I've been up to since you elected me county executive. First, I named three staff members to help me in this work, and I think many of you already know them, and you know them well. I have directed my staff to be open to council members and to collaborate with this body whenever possible, and this morning and afternoon I met with many county employees and reassured them that their hard work will not be taken for granted, and that their wisdom is valued. My administration will be open and transparent. This afternoon, I held a press availability in my office. I answered every question they had, and I stayed until they got bored. We will continue to give you and the public the important answers to the questions that you have. I am confident that working together, we can make real progress and provide St. Louis County residents with the honest services they deserve from their elected leaders. Thank you very much.
Reporters, special committees?
Please hold on the order business.
So ordered. Uh, the public forum?
We have forty-three speakers this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, we have forty-three.
Madam Chair, Matt, before we start the public forum, Matt, have a moment?
Sure.
I just wanted to respond to the county executive, and I wanted to tell everybody in this room tonight that this is an auspicious night, and you are blessed to be here. What you've witnessed tonight is democracy at work. What you've witnessed tonight is the result, as the county executive said, two years of hard work by representatives that were relentless in representing your interests. Don't take it for granted. What this represents is the best of government, and we have a real chance now of righting this ship, as I've said before, towards transparent and accountable government. And so, in a very real sense, I'm, I'm honored to be part of it in the sense that I know we're experiencing exactly what Benjamin Franklin meant when he told Elizabeth Powell, "A republic if you could keep it." But thank you, Mr. Page, for accepting the responsibility. Thank you, Chairman, uh, Erby, for your relentless effort with respect to pursuing justice for the people of St. Louis County. Thank you.
I want to say something as well. We all work diligently every day for our districts, but also for St. Louis County. Instead of being divided, we need to come together. While we fight amongst one another, our babies are dying in the street. While we are asleep at the wheel, mothers have lost their sons just across the street. While we're posting on Facebook, I found out today that our boys and girls' health and welfare are in jeopardy over at the juvenile detention center. While some may want to focus on the negative, I want to focus on what's more important, and I know my council members as well, the people, the parents, and the kids. And we all together will continue to do whatever we can in our power to right the wrongs and effect change in county government, and in our detention facilities, and also in the public safety department. Rather than continue to fight, we need to come together because we're fighting in the midst of some of these families' pain that I felt these past few weeks, probably over this month. And I would like to, um, say that I hope that we can all, you know, work together, and we have been working together very, very well, so I just hope it continues to be honest.
Okay, so, uh, we'll move on with public forum, and we have forty-three speakers. You have three minutes to speak. We'd like for you to approach the podium, give your name and address, and, um, the clerk will alert you when your three minutes are up. And so tonight, since we have so many, when you, when your three minutes are up, please be respectful and allow the next person to come up and speak. Thank you.
First speaker this evening is Bill Newcomb.
As stated, I'm Bill Newcomb. I'm opposed to the Clancy proposal relating to the sale and rental property of, uh, redefining lawful source of income to include Section Eight and other subsidized programs. I do not believe that county government should be imposing rules that should be left to the free market and the property owners to decide. Income source acceptable to property owners should be their choice, since they bear all the risk. In effect, you would be turning all of unincorporated county property into Section Eight housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carmen Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilperson, um, Clancy, for submitting, uh, the bill. I support, uh, that we enforce anti-discrimination. I don't believe that property owners have a license to discriminate. Tomorrow will be the fourth anniversary of my returning to St. Louis, uh, after some years away, uh, while, uh, and the place I came from was an affluent, uh, predominantly white suburb in the North Shore of Chicago. While I was there, I worked with a volunteer group that was lobbying for fair housing in our village, and we met with a great deal of resistance. One of our forums, uh, we had many public forums, a single black mother, and let's not beat around the bush, um, most of the vouchers and subsidies go to single black mothers, uh, and let's not pretend that there isn't discrimination involved in this, uh, that has to do with race. This young woman stood up and explained to a room full of white people that they had nothing to fear from her, and they had nothing to fear from her son, that they were not a threat to this community, that they merely, she merely was trying to provide for her son a safe neighborhood and an excellent education in the public schools. When I came to St. Louis four years ago, I therefore was very intentional about purchasing a home directly across the street from a, an apartment complex that is substantially, uh, made up of tenants who use vouchers. This is what I have observed in the four years I've been there, without exception. Parents who are there because they are trying to provide, to do the best for their children and provide them with a safe environment and a better education than they would have otherwise. So, uh, I urge you to pass this bill and, uh, and enforce a law that's been in the books for fifty years and has been very poorly enforced. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And while I'm up here, please either speak more loudly or get microphones so your constituents can hear you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ed Golderman.
Madam Chairman, Ed Golderman, five-four-two, Waddell Court in Kirkwood. You have a window of opportunity to do greatness for all of the people of St. Louis County, including your employees, your faithful and your long-serving employees. Put a fork in Better Together now. Put a fork in the joint economic development partnership which has poured millions into the city of St. Louis with very little in return. Over the next sixty days or so, find one hundred million dollars from various sources. My last three meetings, I gave you an informal map, a few things to look at, and give your citizens some cushion, whatever might come, whatever might evolve. Secondly, the month of May, or finally, the month of May, every outdoor theater and concert hall in America is opening, except the greatest, the Municipal Theater in Forest Park. You have a big stake, a big stake in Forest Park, and you have a right to expect a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tashonda Trup.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Uh, my name is Tashonda Trup. I live in Pine Line. First, I want to say, congratulations, Mr. Page, on becoming our new county executive. However, I do have some reservations about how this played out. I know you know the people questioned why we didn't get a chance to have a voice before you were given and sworn into that seat. Steve Stinger left a bad taste and a bad vibe in this county as far as trust, transparency, honesty, integrity, and accountability. His actions showed the people exactly the reason we don't trust our politicians. Dirty politics have plagued St. Louis County lately, so you do think making this decision without the people having a voice is wise. I can say I have built up a certain amount of respect for this panel, as you know. Now, um, I have some hope that this panel will follow through on some of the issues I have brought before you, but that's just me. St. Louis County has been connected to so much negative media lately, and making this move just added fuel to the flames. Leaving people without a voice could be one of the worst things this county could have done. The people need to see that St. Louis County has threw out old politics and bad practices. Keeping the people's voices from being heard was just another move in the wrong direction. The people's trust has already been tainted as far as our government is concerned, and then this happened. Personally, I don't have an issue with Mr. Page holding that seat. From the short time I've been appearing in front of this council, you have appeared to have compassion and empathy for my situation. My hope is that since you already aware of the stigma that hangs over this county, that you will work your absolute hardest to clean things up and make St. Louis County great again. We, the people, need to know that our leader is for the people. We need to know that you have the best interest of the people. We need to know that this is a new day. Part of reassuring us that this is a new day will be explaining a few things. Why was tradition broken? Why didn't the seat go to the senior member? Why didn't the seat, um, why wasn't Hazel Erby considered? Why didn't the people get a vote? Why the rush? What happens to your old seat? I really would appreciate some clarity because it has been extremely hard for me to follow how St. Louis County is ran. I've been reading the county council charter, and it doesn't look like it's being followed. I know it, I know my time is limited, but we, the people, are really looking forward to an answer, because it looks like our government makes a habit of writing charters, policies, and procedures that they don't follow. Do you think it's time for the change? People are ready for a new day, so we have trust in you, Mr. Page, to give us that.
Next speaker is Angela Zorich.
Hello, I'm Angie Zorich. I live at one-three-seven Nippenberg Drive, six-three-one-two-nine. Um, I've been coming here with... So I just wanted to let you all know that we went to the St. Charles County Council meeting last night instead of coming here, so we had to watch it on YouTube, but, um, as you can see, we're pleased, I'm pleased, that, that this change has occurred. And I'm sad, I appreciate the words that you guys said last night. I think it is a very sad situation, and I think that other people, like St. Charles County, you know, they had some other issues to talk about, better, better together, and how that affects them, and, you know, they had some kind of thing going on that I really haven't paid that much attention to, so shame on me. But I think that other counties, they made comments during their council meeting, like, if we don't let the people in St. Charles have a tax break on tax-free weekend for back to school, they're going to go over the, across the river and buy from that dysfunctional county and help their retailers instead of our small businesses. So it's really, we should all be embarrassed and, and do better, and I honestly have come here several times over the last five years, and I, I, I really like what I've seen since I've been coming this, this last month or so. So I appreciate everybody's help and outreach towards us. We, one more thing, I did, we did look at some of the policies, were able to, because of you guys, um, and I, I don't, I don't think it's as much a policy issue as it's a, a functional issue in the jail, the people that are in there, and I hope that maybe we can set up some system where people like you or me can actually go in there and see what's happening, like randomly, maybe, I don't know. I'm, I'm not telling you how to do your job, but it's, it's, it's down deep, the guards, the nurses, I'm not sure exactly who, but bad things are happening, and it's not because, I think of the policies, I think it's because of the procedures and the practices over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Natasha Trup. Uh, then George J. Jones, Jr.? George? Lisa Pennet?
Hi, I'm Lisa Pennet, and I live in unincorporated St. Louis County, which is very important for this discussion, since we're talking about expanding the discrimination in housing to include, um, income as a qualification. First of all, I'm really disappointed because I say that you guys are all representing us in unincorporated, and this is why we want munis, is because munis always protect their people, and whenever we come before the council, we're not protected, and this is just an example of that. If this was so great, you would already have this for the munis as well. You didn't include the munis because you know that they will stand up for their people, and they won't get this shoved down their throats. This is nothing more than theft. When you talk about looking at income, a house costs a lot of money, so if you're going to rent that out, you're talking about not using that as a qualification, and so if you have to open that up and not look at income, then you're basically saying somebody has a license to steal your property, which is theft. If you were to go buy a car, they look at your income, and you have to prove your income. Should we all go to the car dealerships and tell them that they need to hand over the keys? Should we go out tonight after the council meeting and head over to the jewelers and say, "We demand those diamonds"? Those are actually things that are worth less than these houses that people have bought to rent out. This is ridiculous, it is complete theft, it's ultimately communism. When you have someone that buys property and then the state or local government then tells them that they are mandated to then rent out their property, that is the definition of communism. So, I mean, I'm just telling you, this is theft, this is the wrong direction, uh, for the county, and this is why people head out of the county for reasons just like this, and it's also why we say that the munis protect and the unincorporated areas do not, and that's why people fight for their munis, because their munis fight for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brenda Webb.
Good evening, um, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you guys. Uh, my name is Brenda Webb, and I'm actually here from St. Charles County, I'm one of your neighbors, and I just wanted to, uh, present to you my view that I am, I, as a neighbor, is, I am very, very opposed to the merger. I just think it's a, it's a bad idea for our whole state, um, you know, and it's bad for you guys. I don't believe in bigger government, regionalized government, you know, I believe in keeping government smaller so that we can reach out to our representatives and work with you as, and as opposed to being, you know, tamped down and, and, and blocked out of everything. So that's my, that's what I wanted to present to you. Our county, and I'm just a citizen, I'm not a representative, but they, they did pass a resolution last night, um, opposed to the statewide vote, and I just kind of wanted to share that with you. I think, you know, as we get the word out, and I'm going to be helping with that wherever I can, um, I think people need to understand that it's bad for the entire state, and I agree with the young lady who said, "Let's make, uh, St. Louis great again, let's make Missouri great again." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cassandra Butler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to say, I mean, there, there are so many speakers, so I like that, put a fork in it, so I just want to reiterate, uh, kill the better, I agree about killing the better together, sink fell plan. I also want to agree with someone else who mentioned, uh, she hopes, and we do need transparency, so I hope that we can retire the back-room decisions, so. Also, I want to agree with, um, I think landlords have a need to know that rent money does not come from an illegal source, and that source is reliable, but that's it. So, and what I came to talk about is, I, um, I'm looking forward, and I hope that this county council can help establish a police civilian review board. The city has one, and I think they're making good progress, um, and as far as the county, I live in Ferguson, and Ferguson has one, and we're working on, on, uh, pro, we're making progress on that. But, you know, Ferguson is one of, what, ninety municipalities? And so Ferguson working on it on our own is like, you know, it's just one little spot, and I don't remember how many square miles, the county is four hundred square miles, but anyway, it's, we need a countywide civilian review board, so it's, Ferguson is not just Ferguson, and, uh, Ferguson is all of St. Louis County. Thanks.
Next speaker is John Chasnow.
Hi, I'm John Chasnow, I live at seventy-four, seventy-five Gannon in University City, and I just wanted to, um, strengthen what Cassandra just spoke about, about civilian review. Um, I, I did want to first congratulate you, Mr. Page, on your, um, motion yesterday, and wish you the best of luck, um, but I do want to say that, oh, as I read my Facebook feed this morning, one of the things that was clear to me, as it often is, is the racial tensions that exist in this county. I felt it in... I felt it in the discussion about your vote last night, and I think that so many of the issues that come here before the council have to do with racial injustice. We've been talking to you for a while now about civilian review of police, and I frankly feel that there's a sympathetic air in the council, I think there's something that we can get done. But, and I realize too that you've been very distracted by the issues of county government that have been before you, but I just wanted to urge you to reinvigorate this discussion around civilian review and push it forward. I hope one of you will take up that mantle and make sure that this gets done, because I think it'll move the whole county forward. Thanks.
Next speaker is Chauncey Mayfield. Chauncey Mayfield? Then Larry Shelton?
My name's Larry Shelton, I live at 554 Vossill in Baldwin, Missouri. I'm here today to talk to you about the overall proposal that Ms. Clancy has made regarding the discrimination issue. I'm not opposed to passing laws that prevent discrimination, but I am opposed to preventing or allowing government to interfere in business. And in that regard, I would like to look at the paragraph 12, which says lawful source of income includes, but is not limited to income. Well, that language allows for pretty much any type of income. You go on to explain that it's to cover Section 8 and the VA vouchers and that type of thing, but you open the door to prevent, or to penalize a landlord or a seller for refusing to make a deal or rent property or sell a piece of property, even if they were only considering debt-to-income ratio. I find that disturbing. You attempt to carve out a class of people that are not covered under discrimination laws of the state of Missouri or the U.S. Constitution, that being those people who have income. Now, you don't limit that income, you don't limit what is discriminatory in your wording. I would like to know when it became unlawful, or why you would propose that it become unlawful, for individuals to refuse to do business with the government or with a government subsidy. In other words, you're forcing this upon landlords and sellers. In my, in my personal opinion, this is a violation of our basic capitalistic beliefs that allow us to do business in a capitalistic society here in the United States.
That's three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
But more importantly, this violates the Missouri statute, or I believe it will violate the Missouri statute-
Could you wrap up the comments, please, sir?
-on business expectancy interference.
Excuse me, could you wrap up just briefly?
Oh, okay. Business expectancy interference has been around for over 400 years, it came to us from the common law in a case 400 years ago in 1620 in England. The common law came to the United States, we have always honored this theory of law. Yet, you are attempting to prevent or allow people to interfere in business transactions by just saying, "I don't like the source of income that you have," or that you have too much debt and not enough income. And with that, I would ask that you, maybe you look at the wording of what you're proposing. It may not be a bad idea to try and prevent discrimination at some level, but I think that your approach and the wording in this is definitely inappropriate.
Thank you. Next speaker is Azora Liggins. Azora Liggins? Nicola Kia? Nicola?
Hello, my name is Nicola Kia, and I reside at 1420 Short Island. My name is Nicola Kia.
Could you just, you can, ma'am, you can-
The micro microphone closer. Is this better? Speak up a little bit into the mic.
You can pull it closer to you.
Yep.
It moves.
Okay. I'm here on the beha, I'm here on behalf of the Center of Hope and Peace located in Kenlock, Missouri. I'm a client and a volunteer. I've been here before this board numerous of times, and nothing has been done. When Stinger was on the board, he didn't do anything about the problems. After the election, the old mayor was voted out of Kenlock, and the new mayor has not been able to take his seat. I heard it was over some bogus mess. There's, I thought doing this kind of thing helps us, not hinder us. So, I want to know if there's gonna be anything done about this. Mr. Page, I want to know, are you gonna do something about this, because there has to be something done, some accountability for this action. And Ms. Queen has been given a bogus occupancy permit, and Mrs. Blue rented us the building under false pretenses, and the occupancy permit was bogus. Now, can any, can anything be done about that? Please, give us an answer, please.
I think that, haven't you talked, we've talked to the office before, my office before, about that? Would you just give your name and number to my assistant, Jackie, cause she's sitting over there, we'll, we'll call you, I'll call you.
Okay, thank you.
That would be me instead of Mr. Page, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Azora Liggins.
Good afternoon, I'm Azora Liggins, Normandy, Missouri. Congratulations, Mr. Page. I'm here again trying to get some information, I know we've shaken up the council, and I still can't get any information from the prosecuting attorney's office, and I realize it's not your responsibility, but somebody has to, again, give some oversight and transparency in how we are being received at that office. Again, we're not asking for help, we're just asking to be able to be afforded the same due process rights that a criminal would be afforded if we were there as criminals, but unfortunately, we are there processing charges, and yet our charges are not being taken serious. And that leaves a lot of frustrated people on the street. I was here last week, and I just simply asked if you could recommend that someone from the Wesley Bell's office would come over and just give some information on how they process charges. Is anybody in the audience from Mr. Bell's office, or? Probably not. So, again, I would like to make that request, again, if I have to put it in writing, is there a protocol? Or can we expect information from Wesley Bell's office? Is that some question somebody can answer?
I don't think we can tell you what you can expect from his office, I mean, we have no control over that. If you call his office, certainly there's somebody who would return your call.
Well, it hasn't been done, I've had Councilwoman Gray, her assistant has been in ongoing contact with the office, we're not asking for anything but what is due process. It actually should be on the website. We shouldn't have to come before the council to look for this information, it should be published on the website. And again, I still would like to ask, if you could make a recommendation, maybe you can't, maybe you can't, but you could simply make a recommendation for someone from his office to come over and give us some information on how to file these process, these claims. And I have a situation, when we got here tonight, we got here at 5:30, and we signed in, and the gentleman that signed us in, when he was taking us, our names, I asked him, I said, "Are you gonna be able to keep those names straight?" He said he was gonna do what he wanted to do with that list. So, again, that's probably why there were so many people that were called forward out of order, but I was always under the impression that when you came, you were signed in and called based upon that sign-in sheet. So, I hope that in the future, we would be more mindful of that. And again, I would like to see somebody assist me with the prosecuting attorney's office, because my problem is dire, and maybe people don't understand that, it's not in the grave yet, but I buried a lot of people with this problem. So, hopefully, somebody on the panel will see the need to call over to the prosecuting attorney's office and ask him, "How do we process these charges?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Brooks.
Good evening, everybody. I wanna first remind you all about when I came here April 9th, your last county council member meeting, and told you all about the Metro Reimagine, about the bus routes that are gonna be disconnected, shortened, and rerouted. First thing I wanna quote is a quote from Rosa Parks, and it started on December 1st, 1955, when she said, "It all started on a bus." And when I say this right here, I find it humiliating and a travesty to be standing here after all those years, asking for the same thing, right to have access to a public transportation. And Metro Reimagine, their plan is to reroute, discontinue, and to shorten bus routes. And so, I've been here at the city council, well, Ferguson City Council, I've been here, I've been talking to people on buses, and a lot of people have no idea about Metro Reimagine. A lot of the people that ride buses are unaware, they're like walking zombies, and you know, I find it strange, a lot of people sick tonight, it's a lot of coughing, and people, you know, overriding what people are talking, every time I come to meetings, I find the people, they're real sick. But I would truly like to mention the fact that it's, it would be more responsible for you all as city leaders to reinforce what's about to happen around these people that you serve. So, when it comes to Metro Reimagine, like I said, I live in Ferguson, I'm bus number 79 between suburban and day, and they're talking about taking that route out. Right now, I walk two blocks, when this is cut out, I'll be walking a whole mile to where I have to go. And so, when it comes down to their plan with Jessica Milford Miller, who's the executive director, these routes, at this point, they're intersecting routes where we can just easily get a transfer, get on another bus. Their plan is to have parallel routes, so when we actually ride now to the other connecting route, we're gonna have to walk that, to that connecting route. That means that our transfer is gonna expire a whole lot faster, that means that people, like when they're shorting the routes to go out further into county, they have jobs there, that means that they're promoting Uber, bike share, Lyft, and all the cabs, Colorado, whatever else, so we as cab driver, we as a bus driver is gonna be paying Metro as well as Uber, Lyft, you know, everybody else. So, while these people are walking in a, in a world of ignorance, because I sit in leaders and I stand up to the plate, I need you all to understand that there's gonna be exponential crime going on around here, so while y'all sitting here in a calm environment, it's gonna be a whole lot worse in a few months, because their land is planned out to come out in the fall, and I'm truly asking that you all come out to our community forum, which is gonna be in Ferguson, Missouri on May the 18th.
That's three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
Uh, we have, let me, let me just tell them about the community forum. So, we gonna have a community forum, but we gonna have Jessica Milford Miller in Ferguson explaining what the plan is, but we're also asking the community to come out that ride the buses to voice their opinions. And that's gonna be May the 18th, from 10 to 12 p.m. at the Ferguson Community Center at 1050 Smith Avenue in Ferguson, Missouri.
Did you already get someone from Metro to come?
They're gonna be coming to that forum, yes, Jessica Milford Miller, she's the executive director for the, for their plan.
Right, I know.
So, like I said, when it comes to you all as city leaders, I know y'all talking about better together, but if you have this situation going on, you gonna have a whole lot more crime, you have to worry about anything combining, cause you gonna have so much chaos. Mike Brown's situation is, that was gonna be the opening party for what you gonna experience. So, please, notify these people about Metro Reimagine, and come out to our community forum on May 18th.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dan Hyatt.
Good evening, county executive, Mr. Page, council members. My name is Dan Hyatt, I'm a resident of Maryland Heights. I wanna thank you council members for fighting the good fight against the corrupt administration and great political risk to yourselves. Mr. County Executive, Mr. Page, I am sure if your peers ask you how many cell phones you have, you'll answer without hesitation. First off, Better Together is not. Do not support the merger. I'm from Los Angeles, the San Fernando Valley, where for decades, we paid 80% of the taxes and got 20% of the benefits. If you wanna see it, look what's happening now. I oppose that you take $5 million out of the police budget after we gave you 80 million in tax money, Prop P, and you turn around and give our next-door neighbor $6 million for a project that we get no tax money from, when instead, you can open your own convention center and big hotels with big tax money north of the airport and attract people from around the country and around the world. Let's use some common business sense when we're making these decisions. Stop the River of Grain going from St. Louis County to St. Louis City, it's gotta stop, let them fall. Next, next, on our assessments tomorrow, you can start contesting your county assessments. Most people agree that we are way over-assessed, most people think it's cause you can't raise taxes without a vote, so you do it by over-assessing people, you have until July 8th, and I hope the media lets the public know that they can easily and fairly challenge their assessments, and the county will not retaliate, they will not retaliate, I promise you that. Next, I want, on the Section 8 thing, instead of strong-arming landlords and vilifying them, why not use some good business sense and attract them with honey instead of vinegar by coming up with guaranteed business loans to clean up the derelict houses in return they agreed to rent them at a reduced rate for so much time? Don't strong-arm them, partner with them, we got lots of derelict houses in the county and the cities, and it doesn't cost that much to guarantee the loans, it's not like you're loaning the money yourself, you're just partnering with the banks to make sure that the loans go out. And consider doing a, to avoid this battle over county executive that we had yesterday, consider presenting a charter change to the people of the county to where they elect, when they vote for the county executive, a vice-county executive off of the board, so that if anything happens to the county executive, the vice-county executive steps up, no, none of the problems, everything's cool.
That's three minutes, Madam Vice Chair.
One last thing, real quick, American Bar Association Journal of Housing did a paper on St. Louis, and the occupancy inspections and occupancy permits is done by St. Louis County and municipalities are a violation of the United States Constitution and the U.S. Fair Housing Act. When you read the paper, you figure out that suddenly they're saying, "Oh, University City who started this did a Jim Crow law." If you don't know what a Jim Crow law, it is- If you don't know what a Jim Crow law, it is anti-black law. So get that thing out of American Bar Association Journal of Housing on St. Louis occupancy permits and inspections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kristi Hassel.
Hi, I'm Kristi Hassel, and I'm from unincorporated South County. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Better Together identifies fragmentation as the main problem in the St. Louis area. Why do people want to live in municipalities? Because they need an extra layer of government to protect them from legislation Lisa Clancy is proposing to force landlords to accept Section 8 housing. Communities with large areas of Section 8 housing are known for increasing crime and decreasing property values. We don't want this in South County. We don't want our property rights taken from us. If you think this is such a great idea, you should move to an area dominated by Section 8 and then tell us how that works for you first, before you impose it on the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Barbara Chichario.
Good evening. My name's Barbara Chichario. I live at 720 Harvard in University City. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of a police civilian review board being formed and utilized in St. Louis County. Such a board is already operating in St. Louis City. I'm aware that currently, cases involving shootings of civilians or shootings of other police officers or overuse of force on the part of police is reviewed and investigated by the Board of Police Commissioners. This feels to me like the police policing the police. There must be an independent board of commission comprised of citizens to make sure that cases are investigated fairly. A civilian oversight board could investigate incidents or allegations involving police simultaneously with the Board of Commissioners. There could be a procedure in place to deal with situations when the Board of Police Commissioners and the civilian oversight board do not come to the same conclusion. This transparency could help reduce police violence, which is a prerequisite for reducing animosity between the St. Louis County citizens and the county police. And I'm not quite sure what the procedure would be to form such a board or commission. I don't know if the county council can kind of do that in-house. If so, I urge you to do that. If not, I request the county council place this measure on the ballot so St. Louis County residents can decide on the matter themselves. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mark Bellman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for this opportunity and congratulate each and every one of you. My name's Mark Bellman, 740 Lindsay Lane, Barson, Missouri, 63031. In 1996, I was appointed by then-county executive Buzz Westfall to co-chair a committee to study Section 8 housing. It was the St. Louis County Ad hoc Committee. We studied it as a group for several months, and we came out with some very good findings. Thank you for the, with the help of the St. Louis County Housing Authority, which at that time was ran by and directed by Neil Malloy, very good guy. We discovered that there were strong disproportions of where Section 8 housing was. The reason I got on the committee was, or asked to get on the committee is because I fought. And I'm a builder, land developer, relatively known in North County. And I went up against another builder who was wanting to put in an apartment complex at Arrow Point. Figured out a way to defeat it. We brought the state of Missouri in because they have to go for funding through MHDC, which are tax credit monies. Now, the reason builders and developers do this is because it's a moneymaker. They do not go to the bank in a conventional way to buy a house, like you would buy a house. They go to and use state funding tax credits. And it becomes very profitable for them to abide by HUD's rules. You can make all the rules you want in St. Louis County, you still have to abide by Federal Fair Housing Act, HUD. You still have to. So I strongly suggest you review those, and I strongly suggest you get with your own St. Louis County Housing Authority. Now, how I was successful in beating the funding was the fact that you can get a document from your county housing authority. Looks just real simple. I received this this past year, in 2018, for a development that was coming into the city of Hazelwood. And I fought that, and I spoke with MHDC. MHDC did not give them their funding. Subsequently, they didn't put the project in. Right now, St. Louis County Housing Authority has approximately, as current as this document, they handle 6,031 units of Section 8 housing throughout St. Louis County. But it's not limited to St. Louis County. Some of those vouchers go into the city. In North County, proper, 4,081 of these Section 8 vouchers are in North County, the area that I grew up in, the area that I built, and that is where I still live today. So I am not opposed or support the proposition. I just want you to be careful about what you're doing on mandating the mom and pops, the people that can't sell their house, the folks that have no other choice but to rent it out. And if by forcing them to go with Section 8, it may not be your best interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jawan Harris.
Like I said, congratulations to you all. I, Jawan Harris, residing in unincorporated North St. Louis County. Born and raised, stand before you today as a concerned St. Louis County resident. This is about a horrific crime that recently took place. This tragedy could have easily been prevented. There is a nonprofit organization that goes by the name The Bell Project. This organization has full access to all of the inmates currently incarcerated in the St. Louis County Justice Center. The Bell Project gets to interview as many inmates as they like, bonding 20 to 30 inmates out at a time. They solicit in the jail with posters hanging up, interviewing mass amounts of inmates in which no other profession is allowed to do. Does this mean that anyone can call themselves a nonprofit, apply and be granted a 501(c)(3), and get these same privileges as they receive? I would like to tell you a story that I'm sure you're aware of, about a young lady named Marcia Johnson. Her husband, Samuel Scott, was arrested and charged for breaking her cheekbone and damaging her ear. When she did all she could do, filing a restraining order, the very next day, The Bell Project posted $5,000 cash money to the courts, ensuring his release. Upon release, he went straight back to the apartment they shared, and he beat her to death. This group is not regulated by St. Louis County nor the state of Missouri. They have full access to dangerous criminals, including robbers, kidnappers, burglars, and rapists, et cetera, bonding out as many as they like. I would like to know who is allowing this unlicensed, unregulated entity to act as licensed professionals and not be held to the same standards as professionals within the justice system. I'm asking that they are brought to a halt before the tragic story of Marcia Johnson repeats itself. These type of scenarios can be avoided by simply regulating this group. Why not limit them to posting bond on traffic tickets and nonviolent misdemeanors only? And I truly thank you all for listening.
Next speaker is Zaki Barudi. Mr. Barudi?
Good evening. My name is Zaki Barudi. I reside in University City, 822 Saxon Court. And also, I'm representing the Universal African Peoples Organization. First of all, I extend congratulations to you, Mr. Page. But at the same time, I wasn't shocked about the process of choosing the next county executive. And I felt like many people that there should have been some discussion. As well as I was shocked by your decision, Ms. Gray, being a historian myself, I would like to have thought that you may have given, nominated Ms. Hazel Irby based on the historic precedent, and she being a black female that was said to history for the county. So anyway, I just want to get that out of the way. But I'm here on the point of civilian oversight board. And I've been here a number of times. And I'm just shocked that you were able to make that decision collectively so quick as you did. And we've been coming here for a number of months. And yet, we cannot get a vote as to placing this issue on the ballot. And Mr. Drake, you say, you spoke about this being democracy. All we're asking is for the voters to have an opportunity to make a decision as to whether or not a civilian oversight board should be put forward for the St. Louis County Police. Especially just most recently, and I don't have all of the details, even a white firefighter was killed in a, as an extension of a car chase by the St. Louis County Police. And it was some kind of not thorough investigation at the beginning. And that speaks to again why we should have a county oversight board for the St. Louis Police Department. So I'm really, I'm really, you know, at ends, at wits' end as to why you as a county council cannot put this on the ballot for the people to make a decision one way or the other. So before I leave, I would hope that, and I noticed at some of the other meetings, that you, when the animal shelters were here speaking on their issue, that you responded. I would like to this evening, get a response. And I'm asking you, like I had asked you in the spirit of Dr. King, that this is a critical issue facing our community. Just most recently, a young black woman was killed because she was shoplifting. And officer claimed that she thought she was putting, shooting, using a taser gun. That's a damn shame. That's a damn shame. And are we asking you for something simple to actualize democracy? That's all. So I'm asking you, I'm asking every board member this evening, after everybody has spoken, what is your position on the creation of a civilian oversight board? I know Ms. John Chestnut said, and we thought you had a sympathetic ear, but it's no action. So I just, again, call upon you to put some action to your sympathetic ears. Thank you.
Next speaker is Farah Khanshag.
Can you hear me? Good afternoon. First off, congratulations, Mr. County Executives, Mr. Sam Page, my awesome, fantastic, wonderful, great councilwoman, Ms. Hazel Irby, and all of the other fellow council members here today. It's a pleasure and it's an honor to be here today. As I stand here today in this invalid place of democracy, I am at unease about the developments taking place in my community. As a result, I question if democracy is a place for St. Louis County. Many here today are excited about the new direction with the new county executive, many are not. Only time will tell that this direction is the right direction. One issue that I would like to bring to your attention, if it has not crossed your desk yet, is the Weston Housing Crisis. Approximately 300 to 500 people are currently being forcefully relocated from their homes. There is a looming authorization for St. Louis County Housing Authority to assume authority of the Weston Housing Authority. Their takeover includes demolishing of 201 units and displacing those 300 to 500 people, leaving the city of Weston a wasteland. Where is the justice of a single parent being kicked from their home and children being forced to transfer from schools because housing authorities with poor oversight from housing urban development refuse to maintain healthy living conditions? Because citizens live in public does not mean that they can't live in decency. It does not mean that they cannot be treated with respect. We are a community standing with all those affected by this ultimate decision. We are a community that takes care of one another, a community that is empowered and moving forward. I encourage this council to help ensure St. Louis County Housing Authority is doing all that it can to provide quality housing to every resident in St. Louis County, regardless of the zip code, and avoid evicting a single resident from the city of Weston. In addition, as of April 30th, I'm asking that you lead this county with just governance, aim at restoring community trust and enforcing laws in fair and intended ways with the focus on restorative justice and equity, judicial independence, fiscal responsibility, and transparency. Also, securing educational achievement, fairness, and opportunity for all young people within St. Louis County. And in addition, enable new, proven, and innovative pathways for all residents within St. Louis County to have equal access to economic opportunity by addressing critical needs. And I'll leave with this, four seconds. I'll leave you all with this reminder. And Ms. Hazel, this is very familiar with you. Matthew, chapter 23, verse 11. "He who is greatest among you shall be your servant."
Next speaker is Will Jordan. Just to help folks be ready, after Mr. Jordan, the speaker will be Kate Stratton.
Hello, my name is Will Jordan. I am at 10226 Castle Drive in St. Louis County, unincorporated. Ms. Walton, you are my representative. It's good to see you, Hazel Irby, your good friend. Congratulations, Sam Page, on being the new county executive. I'm here to support the bill for Source of Income. I appreciate the comments that were made by Mr. Bellman. Thank you. And I want to point out to the landlords in the room about the Source of Income protection. One is, I actually served on the Affordable Housing Task Force that made that recommendation. And we didn't make that recommendation in a vacuum. We had a lot of thoughtful conversation and research informed by Jason Purnell and many studies, the Ferguson Commission report about housing in St. Louis County and how we could reverse some of the things that have happened to African-American women in St. Louis County as a result of government policies from as far back as the 50s, 60s that have brought us to the segregation that we have in St. Louis today. And we made it a point that as a part of that commission, that we would put forth things to St. Louis County that would make a difference. And the source of income is huge. It's not new. It's already in St. Louis City. And Mr. Bellman, quite frankly, many of the people in Florissant who do rent to people with Section 8, they're doing it because they're talking to one another and they're finding out that it's probably more reliable than, with this market, it's more reliable to get the money from the government than it is from people who may be in and out of jobs. So I think they're talking to one another. And quite frankly, they have a lot of compassion in Florissant. I grew up in Florissant. And so they took a chance and they realized that it's actually good for them. Now, one of the best things that can happen for St. Louis County, really would be great if it happened statewide, but at least with St. Louis County is that Florissant wouldn't have to take such a grunt of large numbers of Section 8 vouchers. It's good that they're doing it now. I don't think there's a problem. But I think that- But I think that if other parts of St. Louis County had the, see the, see the efficacy of using the voucher as money, because it is money. It's very difficult to get a housing voucher. If you want to get one right now, you will not. It's a hard work, and when people get them, they don't, they don't lose them. And so, one of the things that would make you lose them is bad habits, not, you know, not following through with your contract with your landlord, bad behavior. There's a lot of things that can make you lose it. So the last thing you want to do is lose it. So the better tenant you're going to get is the one that's on the Section 8 voucher because they are not going to, that is gold. So I want to encourage that this is not to make landlords rent to them, it's just to make them consider the voucher as money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kate Stratton, and Ms. Stratton will be followed by John Dank. Bless you.
Hi, I'm Kate Stratton from unincorporated St. Louis County, and I just, hi, I'm from unincorporated St. Louis County, and I'm Kate Stratton. And I just wanted to say that I'm not really for the Section 8 housing, just because I feel like if people are buying personal property and they've worked hard to buy things, then they should have the right who they should rent to in their area or whatever. If they want to become Section 8, then they have that choice. But for the government to force that on people, I just don't think that is fair or right in a capitalistic society. And, you know, and it isn't a racial issue because I work in an area where there's a lot of Section 8 in Jefferson County, and it's, the majority is white. So I just don't want to make this about race. I feel like it's personal property and you working and buying, taking the risk and that you have the right to rent to whoever you want. So.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Dank, followed by Lexi O'Brien. John Dank? Lexi O'Brien, followed by Kira Braxton? John Dank? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jim Dank. I live up around Florissant in unincorporated St. Louis County, but I'm not here to talk about Section 8 housing. I'm here to talk about something that's probably near and dear to everybody's heart in this room, and it's money in politics. I wholeheartedly sympathize with some of the folks that have stood up here and talked about the process of selecting Mr. Page. It would have been nice to have a hearing, but we didn't. Things worked out the way they worked out, and so here we are. So I guess what I'd like to say there to you, Mr. Page, is long live the king. My issue is with the kingmaker and the checks he writes to politicians. And it's not just here local, it's outstate everywhere. My concern, quite frankly, is you're in a position right now where you've got a lot to gain and maybe a lot to lose with this city-county merger. And I think you need to make a commitment to the people here, even tonight, of where you stand on that. Because as soon as the, the last council or the county executive stepped down, I assume that there were possibly checks being written with your name on it. Not that you've accepted any, and I'm not, I'm not making that inference, but money in politics, it's going on everywhere in the state and we all know it. So in the interest of transparency you guys all spoke about earlier today, I guess I'd like, like to hear where you stand on that, and maybe even tonight. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lexi O'Brien, followed by Kira Braxton.
Hello, my name is Lexi O'Brien. I live in Webster Groves, Missouri. I'm here in support of Councilwoman Clancy's Bill 102, amending the County Fair Housing Act. I'm here in support of Bill 102, amending the Fair Housing Act for the county. My understanding is that it is an amendment of an existing ordinance that applies only to unincorporated St. Louis. Is that correct? Which is why it doesn't apply to the municipalities. And in support of that, I wanted to tell a story about myself. When I was growing up in North County, I could count on two hands the families who weren't white. And I took it for granted. I wasn't curious why there weren't any black families living in Florissant area. And decades later, I learned why. Paddock Woods, where so many of my friends lived, was the topic of the 1968 landmark Supreme Court case that decided if private sellers or renters of real estate could discriminate based on race. They can't, but they did for many years. And they did it because market forces, namely white buyers, would not purchase homes in neighborhoods where black families lived. So here we are in 2019. I live in mid-county now, I have kids of my own. Their schools are a lot more diverse, both students and teachers. They have friends who are black, Hispanic, children of immigrants, but not many of them live in my immediate neighborhood. In 2019, our communities are racially segregated, were racially segregated by law and policy from decades past, and they remain segregated. The County Fair Housing Act bars discrimination based on race, religion, national origin, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and familial status. And yet, some landlords in the county openly advertise, "Section 8 need not apply." Landlords screen rental applicants on many criteria, and they can continue to do so. This amendment of the Fair Housing Act says only that they must accept applications and consider them regardless of lawful sources of income. Over 90% of HUD vouchers holders are black, women with children. These vouchers give them an opportunity to move to safe neighborhoods with good education and employment.
Can you wrap up?
Yes, I will. Section 8 does not cause crime and blight. St. Louis City passed similar legislation in 2015. My sister and several coworkers live in St. Louis Hills, right next to apartments with many Section 8 tenants, and they have no problems. The value of their homes keeps going up. Responsive tenants want a good home. Responsible landlords will maintain their investment, and responsible municipalities will hold those property owners accountable to maintaining codes. And that's why I support this amendment. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kira Braxton, followed by Anton Lumpkins.
Good evening. First of all, can you guys hear me? I don't want anybody yelling. I wanted to congratulate you, County Executive Page. I am very pleased, I knew it was going to go either way, so I had no position either way. I thought either way it went, we would be fine, from working with you all over the last year. A few months ago at a, at a fundraiser, you had made a statement to me that really resonated within me, and I've repeated it many, many times to many, many people. And I'm going to paraphrase here a little bit, as far as remembering exactly word for word. You said, "Kira, unfortunately, I have learned in politics that what people say and what people do oftentimes don't match up. You listen to what they say, and you just watch what they do, then you know." I do believe that you mean that, and I do believe that that is your true character and integrity. As a St. Louis County resident and employee, it has been extremely devastating to hear the magnitude of corruption that Steve Stanger subjected us all to. He put this county in grave shape for his own personal gain and paid to play politics, or as he named it from his own mouth, and I quote this, he said it here, "political shenanigans." Millions of dollars have been stolen from dedicated employees for the last 12 years, going to political shenanigans. The hope and desire of every county employee, and I believe I speak for every county employee, is that merit increases are seriously worked on to be reinstated. We're losing a lot of good people, and we're really becoming a training ground for other government entities. As a St. Louis County resident, the cost of Stinger's corruption probably is closer to the billions. The costs are devastating, the loss may never be recovered, the, at all. The vast majority of the million-plus St. Louis County residents, for us and you all as our constituents, is to fight against Better Together and Unite STL. Our hope is that the integrity of St. Louis County is restored with this new wave of things that are happening, that are happening and continued even after that. And lastly, 20 seconds, 26 seconds, I think that all of the patronage employees that were hired by Steve Stanger should be swiftly removed from their duties, as they were all part of Stinger's corruption. Those employees should be replaced with employees of your choosing that will work for the county as a whole. I know for Justice Services, we have employees there that are just there and a ghost employee we never see. So I'm really hoping that as we go forward, that some serious decisions are made and carried out, and I wish you the best of luck.
Next speaker is Anton Lumpkins, followed by Carol Johnson.
Good evening, Board. My name is Anton Lumpkins. I'm a contractor for Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. In April of 2016, I discovered that the Sewer District and the Board had been allowing white contractors to use minority contractors' names on contracts that we weren't on. I was one of them. I went to the Board thinking I was doing the right thing. Jim Sanger called me a whistleblower. He sits on the Board. Once I told him that some of the contracts that they were bidding on with these large change orders, Contract $4 Million with a $2.6 Million change order, I'm not on that contract, my name is, but I'm not on that contract. And these were three or four different contracts, thinking I was doing the right thing. I was then attacked because you have contractors that have too close relationships with engineers, inspectors, and, and upper management. And this has been going on for years. Millions of dollars of African-American money. We are 33% of the customer base at MSD, and our money is not coming back in our neighborhood. I was once Minority Contractor of the Year at MSD. My company has built the baseball stadium, three years out at the airport, up and down Hanley, redoing Weston. So when I brought that to their attention, they attacked me. And it fed on later with Steve Stinger and his mess. SAC was awarded the contract, but I was with JD and Frontier Kemper. I had a $5.3 Million contract to do tunneling. I'm probably the only black here that has done tunneling. I used to work for Affolder Tunneling, and I also worked with SAC on the Lee May Wastewater Treatment Plant Tunnel. But SAC wanted this contract. They got with Stinger, they got with the union, and abracadabra, I was made the fall guy. If you guys are familiar with this case, the, the case with the Deer Creek Project, it's a $147 Million Tunnel. The company I was with were out of Detroit and California. JD sued MSD for $146 Million because of the way they were treated. When you get people talking about the way that they're treated when they do business in St. Louis, that just don't stay here. That goes all throughout the country. They told me they had never been treated like this before. They won this contract by $2.5 Million. SAC, like I said, got with some board members who were dirty, and you guys, the county, the Board here, you guys put three people on that Board, and I'm not going to say you did it, Charlie Dooley did it. Slay put three people in. So you got three from the city, three from the county. You guys need to redo that Board. Back in 2000 and 2004, Tom Sullivan wrote an article, and it was about the waste and something smells rotten at MSD, where these guys are making multi-million dollar change orders. And the company that he wrote about was Affolder Tunneling. They're now SAC. Bob Affolder is the A in Affolder Tunneling, Jerry Shaw is the S, and the Kalishman Boys are the K. The practices that they did then on this one tunnel in McCausland, it was for $27 Million. When they finished, it finished out at $43 Million. At that time, DeJoyce Hayes and Claire McCaskill disassembled the whole Board, because you just don't get change orders, you know, because you turn them in. Somebody has to oversee these. She understands that whole Board was, how can you say it, was corrupt, not corrupt or compromised, and everything had to be done. You guys need to look into it, because Steve Stinger took $5.3 Million out of my company's pocket. I've been around for 20 years, and they actually came after me making up false stories. So if you ever read up on this thing again, you'll see ALL Construction was the way they came in. They came in once, and the engineering department at MSD denied them.
Madam Chair, Mr. Lumpkin, I want you to see my assistant up there and give her your contact information. I want to have a conversation with you. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, but I met with the FBI in December of 2017. They kept me in there for three hours. I've given them all kinds of documents that back up contracts that my name is on, but we weren't on. MSD said they would no longer practice this, but look how long it's been going on. And who's to say they stopped? Nobody's policing them. If the IRS was to audit MSD, they will call me right now and say, "Mr. Lumpkins, you owe us millions of dollars." And I'm like, "I'm not even on these contracts." But this is killing our African-American community. Even though I am an equal opportunity employer, I practice hiring, I have a minority status, and that's who I really tried to bring into construction. And with the fact that our government right now, with our president going to give $2 Trillion toward infrastructure repair, that money is enormous. Now, our Sewer District was giving $5 to $6 Billion in 2012. I don't know how much of that money made down to the black community, if any. There needs to be oversight on, on the Board.
Can you wrap up, or give me your name of your company again? Just? Next speaker is Carol Johnson, followed by Jamie Oliphant.
Hello, my name is Carol Johnson. Right now, I'm going to change back to Carol Isbell, which is my maiden name, my husband died. So I am the only Carol Isbell in St. Louis or anywhere around here. My grandfather was, he, he came, well, I live at 1901 Ashby Road in unincorporated 63114. And I don't know whether to congratulate you or not, I need to know how you're going to gear this administration. My grandfather was a Knights Templar, Aristocrat Knights Templar, were from the Isbell family. And he came from Chicago, who came from New York, who came from England, okay? And he used to have his own UFO, which I used to drive around in when I was a child, okay? So when I was, I, I was arrested falsely several times, and Officer Chris Costa came by and apologized for it, the one he did. And then another guy, he didn't, you know, but it was dismissed. The other one that I talked to you about, and I showed you my neighbors how crazy they are, and it went to, this lady came by afterwards and said she saw the whole thing, which which she did not, and I saw her stop after it happened. She got up and she asked the girl, Carla Shook, what happened, and, uh, Carla Shook said that my husband slapped her in the face six times, which she'd been on the ground, but she took her stroller and ran into him and knocked him down. He was 83 at the time, okay? So anyway, she lied. She asked her what happened, and she said that he slapped her in the face. Well, she went to court, she called 911, and she said Carl slapped her in the face no more than twice, okay? And then, uh, she came in, Carla Shook, and said Carl slapped her in the face six times. And I told her to get off my property. I owned the two lanes out in front of my house, and I bought seven feet past the curb, which has been in dispute with the police and everybody else, which I don't know why, because they have two surveys showing it is my property and I paid for it. And they put a highway in front and a sidewalk, which is mine, which I gave permission for everybody to walk on as long as they don't give me problems. And they were giving me problems. I told them to get off my property. They said, "This is public." I said, "No, it's not." They wanna argue with me and fight. And now it's still going. She went into court, and Steve Robson was the prosecutor, and he yelled to the judge, "She assaulted, hurt her baby." And she said in deposition, "No, Carol did not assault her, and she never claimed I assaulted her baby."
Could you wrap your comments, please?
Huh?
Could you wrap your comments up, please?
Oh, so anyway, that's what I wanted to say. I don't know, and then I also wanted to say something about how you, um, voted for the, um, the one where the, that the pharmacists and the doctors have to report, uh, medicines that they're given and those that are dispensed. That is crazy. That's in violation of the Constitution to unreasonable search and seizures. If you need a copy, I can give you a copy, but I studied it backwards and forwards in college. I have four years of college. I worked since I was 16. I made all As in my security, and I have my own company. So...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Is that all right?
Next speaker is, I think the first name is Jamie Oliphant, followed by Sherlissa Pruitt.
Good evening. My name is Janie Oliphant. I work for a nonprofit called Ascend STL. We run a program called Mobility Connection, and we work with families with housing choice vouchers to help them look for housing in what we call high-opportunity neighborhoods. Those are essentially low-poverty neighborhoods. I'm speaking today in a personal capacity. I live at the 4100 block of Casman Avenue in St. Louis City. Um, I'm here to, to, uh, provide my support for the addition of the Source of Income Law as a protected class to the county's Fair Housing Codes as introduced by Councilwoman Lisa Clancy. A Source of Income Law would help more families move into high-opportunity areas and connect qualified tenants to property owners. The law would require property owners to allow voucher holders to put in applications. If they have better qualified applicants, it is their right to deny the voucher holder or any other applicant to, the opportunity to enter into a lease with somebody. The Mobility Connection Program was created a couple years ago with strong support, strong research evidence that suggests that families with vouchers who move into middle-class neighborhoods do better on a variety of indicators. In particular, it helps families become more self-sufficient. The children can go to better schools, the parents are less stressed out, and the families win. Unfortunately, very few families with vouchers make it into these neighborhoods, in part because of the discrimination that they face. We have this housing program that could be used to help families become more self-sufficient, but in large part, most families with vouchers are trapped in high-poverty neighborhoods. Just today, I had a family who I enrolled in the program, a working mom. She works part-time, she has three kids, two of whom are disabled, and the housing voucher helps her get by and helps pay her rent. She has a long history of positive rents. She pays her rent on time every month. Her credit score is over 700, but she'll have a really hard time finding a place to live in a high-opportunity area because so many property owners will just deny her the opportunity to put in an application. Prior to the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1968, it was legal and common practice for property owners, or quote-unquote landlords, to deny Black families and other families of color the opportunity to apply for rental properties. To think that a property owner would do that in 2019 seems outrageous, right? We should think of denying people with vouchers the opportunity to apply for housing in the same way. It's outrageous that my highly-qualified tenant will struggle to find decent, affordable housing in a high-opportunity area because every property owner she meets won't give her a chance to put in an application. The county council should change that.
Next speaker is Sherlissa Pruitt, followed by Rainey Abston.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? Sherlissa Pruitt. I am both a county employee for the Recruiter Deeds, and I live at the 5300 block of Grove, Ferguson, Missouri. Tonight, I come before counsel, really for clarity. Um, hopefully, the clarity can be for most people, um, because since this emergency meeting yesterday that named you, uh, Dr. Page as county counsel, congratulations for that. I extend the rope because I give it to everybody initially, you know, to hang themselves, per se. Yeah, um, uh, I mean, well, I wouldn't mean that to be funny. My question is, is one for you, Ms. Erby. Did you really consider, um, standing in as interim county executive?
Why don't we talk about it after the meeting? Is that okay?
That is okay. Um, and again, I ask that, um, because being a witness to yesterday's meeting, there was a lot of tension leaving in that, um, leaving that meeting, you know? And understandably, if you really did not want, and, and I wouldn't blame you, uh, right now, we see happening all over the state of Missouri, um, posts being, um, placed into minorities' hands, and they taking the rap for problems and issues that has already, uh, been laid out and played out, but since they are in charge now, they get the blame. So understandably, if, you know, if you really didn't want that, yeah, I wouldn't blame you, is what I'm saying, but for the sake of, uh, potentially not, uh, dividing us, uh, as a, as a race, and, and you understand that, with the backlash that Ms. Gray is getting and potentially could get, you get what I'm saying? I just wanted, you know, an understanding on why, um, if you didn't want the position, um, who would you have supported in being the interim?
Let's just say this. I'll talk to you later if you'd like to talk personally, but I'm perfectly fine with how things are. I'm ready to move forward.
Well, I'm glad because you all have worked together diligently. Uh, I've been in and out of these meetings, uh, where the prior executive had not been here, and you guys do work so well together. Uh, so, I mean, I just don't want the tension moving forward, being that part of me that is a county worker, uh, because we have already have been under the strain of what's been going on with the prior executive.
That's remitted. And we recognize that, and so we're fine.
Thank you.
We're fine.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rainey Abston, followed by Jennifer Byrd.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Rainey Abston with the Raula Renters Association. And I've been sitting here listening to so many people speak that I've curtailed my speech for this evening. And so one of the things that I heard was the outrage of people in Section 8 and where do they live? And so that brought me to the, the curious question of anybody's ever heard of Section 42 of housing? Because it's also a subsidy and a tax credit that people can get, but it's for artists. And so, but it's a subsidy, though. And so it just blows my mind because it says Section 8. Everybody's in a tizzy. But what if this person was qualified for Section 42? Would it still, still be the same outcry? So it just makes me wonder, how do people view what they understand or what they say? People do not make enough money to live. So there's things called tax crays. Whether it's a Section 8, Section 42, whatever section, it is for people who do not make enough money for housing. The other thing that caught my ear, I kept hearing, "They need to go somewhere better. They need to go somewhere better." Doesn't that bother you that that means they're living in something less? And everybody's identifying that, but that's okay? So when I think of these type of things, and when I hear these things as a pattern, I don't hear nobody trying to interject, because that, to me, is really the problem. If you have to go somewhere else, let's consider better. And when you say that about these people that are living there, that they need to go somewhere else better, what are you really sublimely saying to the people that are living in the place that needs to go out to be better? Are they bad people? Are they less people? Because that's what, that's this language that I keep hearing, that they need to go out to get better. So in the inner city, are they just less? I mean, are they worthless? Are they valueless? Because as this conversation keeps going, they have to go somewhere else to get better. And I also want to talk about not allowing people to move where they need to and not understanding certain things. A lot of people who move into these properties are moving in with the, the instinct of just wanting to survive. But like this application letter of the City of St. Louis, it moves tenants in into condemned buildings. Paying tenants, full-paying rent tenants are living in condemned buildings. I got a paying tenant, full-paying, $1,000 a month rent. This is supposed to be better living, but it's in Spanish Lake. So what is really better? We got people being thrown out all over the place, as we talked about in the thing, because they need something better? No, they just needed a place to live. So I'm gonna curtail my fact to just pretty, pretty much say that I'm asking the council here to consider legislation, but I'm also asking people to consider the language that you use when you're talking about people.
Next speaker is Jennifer Byrd, followed by Arnie Dinoff.
My name is Jennifer Byrd. I live at 9244 Laurel Hill Drive in Crestwood. I appreciate your, uh, again, moving the meeting time to 6:30 and for also taking my comments. I want to say, Mrs. Erby, I'm a little disappointed. I, I know you know, I was a little excited, and I was thinking, you know, first hope, uh, but I do want to congratulate you, uh, new county executive, Dr. Page. I think this is great that we do have a change, because I know you know that what was happening with, uh, Mr. Stanger was not working very clearly, and I think he was more worried about doing for him than he was in doing his job for us. And to that point, I think you all probably know, uh, that I am against the, not only the statewide vote, but I'm against the actual Better Together, uh, atrocity that creates a metrosity, uh, in this merger plan. So what I am asking is for you to protect us, uh, to not do the sell-out deal that, uh, Mr. Stanger had already done. I think he was excited about being crowned king for an additional two years without a vote of the people. And, well, I mean, sorry, that's, that's the way I saw it. Um, you know, we have a lot of cooperation that we already are, you know, participating in with the City of St. Louis. I think that that should continue. Um, I think what we've seen in the last five years, I, I'm just marveling at how much this council has changed, uh, in, in the years that you've known me, for example, well, you've known me way before that, but I mean on the council, and, you know, I miss Kathleen Burkett. Um, I don't miss Mike O'Meara, um, and I don't miss Pat Dolan, I'm sure you know that. However, um, we have had a lot of changes, and what I've seen is this Better Together comes in in five years, and what have they done? They've studied, then they turn in a proposal, then they rescind it and redo it and turn it in again, and then when, when the specter over, over Stanger's, uh, body was unable to be ignored, they pulled out and had to make yet another change. So I'm suggesting that we continue to reject, that we vocally reject, that we publicly reject any measure by Better Together because they are disingenuous. They're calling themselves having public discussions now? Why? Their proposal is already on the desk of the Missouri Secretary of State's office. They had no intention. They had plenty of opportunity for five years to include all of us in a public discussion, and they did not want it. They wanted to do this, tell it to the hand, and strictly controlled meetings and very strictly controlled conversations. And now what do they want? They want us to come to their meetings with their public discussions so they can glean from us what our biggest complaints are, what the most egregious points of the proposal are, so they can concentrate their $25 Million that they have for their campaign to run commercials against us, to sell us, so we should not be deceived, and we most certainly are not Better Together.
Next speaker is Arnie Dinoff, followed by Laura Horwitz.
Thank you, members of the county council. Sorry for my throat here. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff. I'm a public advocate, and, um, my address is P.O. Box 1535 in O'Fallon, Missouri, 63366. Mr. Page, congratulations in, uh, in last night's council vote. I hope and I pray that you are true to your words that you said both last night and this evening. Change the way of county government. Build on the strengths, defeat the corruption that is deep inside the walls of this county building. Honesty, transparency, and communication should strive every day that you work in this building. Government is not for sale. Corruption and cover-ups will not be tolerated any longer in this region. Now, there's so many issues to talk about. I've been talking about the courts and jails, but this county building is a seat of government, and it's a seat where people want to come and be free of expression and be safe. It depends on what crew you get, uh, the night of the council meetings. I bit my tongue the last several times about the security checkpoint, the professionalism, and their use of common sense. On what practices and what the procedures are, what the policies will be followed. Every third time, there seems to be a problem and a disconnect of the county policy, and then a conflict arises at the checkpoint. Over the last several weeks, the metal detector's been turned up. Almost everything goes off. Number one, changes are needed at the security checkpoint. Two, politeness, communication of all the officers, not just some of them. Fair procedures need to be in place with common sense, uh, sensibility. No use of passes or bypassing of employees or allowing employees to bring in others off the street, to use the side door, which bypasses and defeats the purpose of a secure public meeting. It is security for all. Now, our police officers and security personnel are human beings and citizens, just like we are. There is no hierarchy. The mentality and power of the badge needs to be on an even keel, fair, honest playing field. Security Officer John Fittan, DSN 4166, "The difference of the, of the, uh, security team tonight was nothing like the harassment and laziness of the security officer Fittan last night. I visited with the sergeant to my right and the captain of the security division. Hopefully, they will listen with an open ear. This bad conduct needs to stop, and we need to have fairness when you come to public meetings." Now, county executive Page, I ask that you clean up county government, that you start tonight, and that you only stand for excellence. No more excuses, starting in the Department of Justice Services, the county jail, and the county circuit courts. We will keep you on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laura Horwitz, followed by Betsy Malin Smith.
My name's Laura Horwitz, and I live at 70 Arundel Place, 63105. I'm here tonight to speak in, um, strong support of Bill 102. I think it's really important that the county council will consider and pass this bill. Um, and I was disappointed by all the misinformation that has been spoken... And I was disappointed by all the misinformation that has been spoken about tonight by county residents who would be affected by this bill and don't seem to understand its meaning. What the bill allows is for people to have a fair opportunity to be considered as applicants for housing. It doesn't force landlords to do anything except it does require them to stop discriminating. So I want to offer a different point of view about what's not possible now that I think many residents would like to have happen. I have spent the past three and a half years organizing families like my own, mostly white families, who really care about racial equity. We work with 850 families in that time and 86 zip codes in our region. Many of those are in the county. And one of the things I hear over and over again from families I work with is how disappointed they are about how segregated our region is and how much that limits the way they can expose their children to the multicultural world and region that we really live in. And how hamstrung they feel that there's very limited action they can take once they've made a decision about what home to buy, about what their community looks like. Because we have 91 municipalities and so even if you care about these issues, you'd have to go to 91 different places to pass 91 different bills. And that's what these 850 families have been doing. Lisa Clancy is one of them and we're so proud that she's on our county council and we worked every day to canvass for her. And we're not going away because we really care about these issues. What this bill would allow is for our voices to be heard and for possibilities to be made that are not possible now. So for instance, I spent the better part of the spring attending many forums of my school district, Clayton School District, talking about our precipitous drop in African-American population because of the end of the VIC program and because of the Normandy transfer program changing. And it keeps coming back to, well, there is no housing diversity in our community and it's not even that welcoming to a variety of families, including families of color and low-income families. That's not something we can even begin to make headway on until we have basic protections in place. And that's what this bill offers. And the fact is, the segregation of our region is what holds us back from thriving. There's so much research that more equitable cities grow faster and they grow in more sustained ways. So if we really care about the future of our region, we should take steps that are sensible like what council member Clancy has proposed, Bill 102, which is recommended by many different people. And I stand in strong support of it and I know there are many families like mine that do.
Next speaker is Betsy Malin Smith, followed by Alyssa Sullivan.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm one of those families that Laura Horwitz was talking about. My name is Betsy Malin Smith and I live in Clayton. I'm here tonight in support of Councilmember Clancy's bill to eliminate discriminatory housing practices. This bill will only require landlords to review and consider all applicants equally regardless of source of income. And the bill begins to remove barriers to entry for people using vouchers and enables families to access higher opportunity areas we are all entitled to live in where poverty is low, schools are strong, and neighborhoods are safe. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alyssa Sullivan, followed by Edward O'Daniel.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Sullivan. I live in Webster Groves, Missouri, in the 5th County Council District. I am here to speak in support of Bill 102, the Source of Income Protection. It is important to me to protect lawful sources of income as an addition to fair housing law. This addition will prevent landlords from discriminating against those who have housing vouchers. It will also prevent landlords from discriminating against renters whose primary source of income is child support and alimony, veterans' benefits, or disability. Right this minute in Webster Groves, well, maybe like an hour ago, the city council is in a special work session discussing this issue and others related to affordable housing. If it makes you feel better, you are not out ahead of this and alone in this. County municipalities are beginning to take up this issue. Nationwide, this is being done all over. Every argument that I've heard in opposition this evening are using arguments and language that were used in the early 1960s to oppose civil rights laws. That is a tired playbook. There is public appetite for this addition to fair housing law. Many people want to live in integrated communities. We know that Source of Income protection is an intentional path toward integration. Unfortunately, we also well-understand that you can't legislate hearts and minds and the lack of protection for Source of Income has at times seemed like a proxy for racial segregation and discrimination. Make no mistake, while Source of Income protection would be a path to just treatment for many groups, the largest group to benefit in St. Louis County would likely be black mothers and children. I think that's important. Much has been done legally to segregate African-Americans into areas lacking in resources and opportunity. Government is already very involved in housing law. We should make this addition to fair housing law purposely to create resource and opportunity. People should get to choose where they want to apply to live and their money should be accepted there. I also want to be firm in countering the fear mongering which sometimes goes along with this discussion. Studies have refuted the idea that people with housing choice vouchers bring crime into an area they move into. That misconception occurred because people with housing choice vouchers were largely railroaded into neighborhoods where high crime already existed. And associating crime and housing vouchers became a public misperception and a false correlation. Higher crime resulting from housing choice vouchers is factually wrong. Naming Source of Income Protections is the right thing to do ethically, I believe, and it's also the right thing to do for the health of our region. And Dr. Purnell's "Segregation in St. Louis: dismantling the divide" report, empirical data illustrates, and I'm going to read a quote from the report now. "Segregated places tend to produce worse health outcomes, particularly for racial and ethnic minority populations. Importantly, this is true whether or not individuals or households are poor themselves. And residential segregation places children at risk along multiple dimensions. And place matters. And because place has been so deeply imprinted by race in St. Louis and other metropolitan areas throughout the country, residential segregation, mixed with economic disinvestment and neglect, has produced pockets of particularly stubborn intergenerational poverty that result in the kind of foreshortened estimates of life expectancy predicted for zip codes like 63106." Oh, I'm sorry. It doesn't have to be this way. We have a policy roadmap from Dr. Purnell. One of the 11 strategies in it is to eliminate Source of Housing discrimination. Please vote affirmatively on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Edward O'Daniel, followed by Michael Burton.
Hello, my name is Edward O'Daniel. I live in Ellisville, Missouri. I am a property owner in the St. Louis County area and I'm here to oppose Councilwoman Clancy's Section 8 bill. Now, when I say I'm opposing her bill, it's not meaning I'm opposing Section 8 program. I am actually a product of a single mother raised on the Section 8 program. I appreciate the program. I just think we should have the choice as a property owner to make our own choices for that. What I would recommend is that you point your gaze toward the Section 8 office and make their processes and procedures more friendly to landlords to want to use. Just to give you an example, as a property owner, I would have to go into Section 8's office, fill out a ton of paperwork, which is extra than what I'd have to do with the non-Section 8 tenant. Then I would have to sit back and wait a week for something to happen. Then wait another couple of weeks for an inspection to actually happen. Once that inspection happens, the inspector's going to tell me this inspection is beyond what St. Louis County has already deemed as being good enough. But Section 8 is now going to come and tell me to do other things to the property in order for it to qualify. So one of the things I don't like, for instance, St. Louis City's office, we have to actually get the inspection passed and qualified before the rent negotiator will even tell us if they're willing to pay what we're asking for rent. That's unfair. So we would have to spend hundreds of dollars to fix up our property that in a sense, we didn't have to do because it's already ready by St. Louis County. Now we have to sit back and go in the additional effort for Section 8, only to sit back and be told, no, we're not going to offer what you want for rent. We're going to offer a discount after we've already put up the money to actually get these repairs fixed. So again, I'm just here to oppose the bill because I feel you should make the Section 8 offices work better. And if you did, if you made that more friendly to landlords, then they would migrate more towards Section 8. So again, I just think the choice should be the property owner's, not yours.
Next speaker is Michael Burton, followed by John Jones.
Hey, y'all. Michael Burton here. Good to see you guys again. I've been out of town for five weeks working. So if you thought I was done or gave up or let these lousy tactics work on me, you were wrong. I know the majority of you. I was going to say, I know the majority of you knew that wasn't the case, but just in case one of you thought that, now you know. Okay. So what's happened since the last time I was here? Councilwoman Clancy has held two town halls in the Afton community and the people sure did show up. Even 16 months after this whole thing started, at her first town hall, which I attended, they set the room up for 70 people. So many people showed up, they had to ask the Bridge Club to move rooms so they could open up the room divider and accommodate the 150 people that showed up. That's how much it means to our community. And the response wasn't 50/50 or 60/40 or 70/30, not even 90/10. If I'm being generous, I'll say it was 95% against and 5% for. So yeah, maybe you've heard some people and some people have contacted you and said they want houses. But the overwhelming majority do not. I encourage you all of you, I encourage all of you to watch the video of Councilwoman Clancy's town halls. I will also point out, many of the people for the development are real estate agents that stand to profit if the houses are built. Many residents have also expressed to me, we are looking for more detailed answers to our concerns. I've shared this with you all and I've shared this with many others. Our goal was to convince the St. Louis County Council that not only is it a bad idea to build houses at the Tower T property, it is also worth St. Louis County purchasing the land and turning it into a St. Louis County park with golf and baseball facilities. I hope now that is more of a possibility again, as it is worth it. In January, our ex-county executive cut the Parks Department fund by $6 million and it was expressed to me that this possibility was not as much of an option anymore. And that was our goal until January. Once again, I hope this has now changed. Since then, after 16 months, McBride has just purchased the property. With no McBride Town Hall, as they originally said, and they have just torn it down before the people were heard. Backdoor tactics through and through. I was told right here by our previous chairman that there would be a process of a proposal, studies by the P and Z, a hearing where the people will be heard at a town hall. And a vote stating, and a vote before things started moving along. But now they have just torn it down shamelessly. Once again, more BS tactics that don't serve our community well. We should all be outraged at McBride for their tactics to delay and disenfranchise our community. I'll stop there because it's been a long night. I just have to add Hazel. I thought you would have made a tremendous county executive. And county executive Page, I feel the same way about you. And congrats and thank you all. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker is John Jones, followed by Paul Hartman. John Jones? Paul Hartman?
My name is Paul Hartman. I live at 17022. My name is Paul Hartman. I live at 17022 Old Hallow Court, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040.
If you pull the mic up a little bit, you won't have to.
Okay, cool. I'm here to talk on behalf of my friend Johnny Shai, who died in the county jail. And also on behalf of Lamar Catchings and his family. And, but first I was going to say, I am happy that Stanger is now gone and Childry is gone. That, that was a big obstacle in fighting for the justice of my friend. And I hope, hope that some progress can be made under our new county executive. Hoping for more transparency, as some people said. And hope there can be some funds for the victims' families. Also a public apology from like the council in general. I know some individuals from the council have made apologies. And I would say for the most part, they sounded sincere. But just from the county, from the council in general, I would, I think that would be, that would be good. Also tougher screening, I think, is going to be an important step in establishing a better county jail. Tougher screening for the correction officers, that is. And also, I wanted to ask a question of, how can you assure us that things will be different now that we have a new county executive? And not have the same vague answers under Mr. Stanger?
Final speaker this evening is Chris Berg.
I have a bad relationship with microphones, so sorry if this buzzes or something. My name is Chris Berg. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of St. Louis. So I came here today as someone impacted by law enforcement violence, corruption, and neglect. So I recently lost my cousin David, who was shot by a police officer. I've been attacked and bashed and discriminated against by St. Louis County police officers because of my sexuality. I've had my friends assaulted and beaten by the St. Louis police. Some people here today who were with us during the Stockley protests when this happened. So when my friend Paul told me about his friend Johnny Shai and Mr. Lamar Catchings, I wanted to come here and address the council and the new exec. So, Mr. Exec, you have a serious problem with violence in your jails coming from corrections officers and directed at inmates. Specifically, I remember during the Stockley protests, there was a young man who needed a kidney transplant. And this young man was incarcerated and the corrections officers forbid him his medication. Now, this is, this is a life-threatening condition in this, this period when somebody's about to get a new kidney or whatever. And without that medicine, their body can reject the new kidney and they'll die. Right? So this young man was being killed by corrections officers right here over in Clayton. So I've also heard now that John Shai and Lamar have died in very suspicious circumstances. And, you know, I'm hearing this talk about transparency and a new leaf being turned over right in the ship. Well, you have an opportunity to do something different. Obviously, Mr. Chasnov and other people have spoken about a civilian review board. I'd like to see that, plus this civilian review board have like some actual power to be able to subpoena people and to conduct their own investigations as a legal entity, not just some advisory board that's toothless, as so often happens. So yeah, you have this opportunity to not have the same old story of cover-ups and violence by law enforcement officers. And I just want you to reflect on how your administration, how you will do things differently. Is it going to be this, this same old story? Also, I want to know if there's anything that you plan to do for justice for these families in terms of, you know, can they be, can they receive some sort of compensation? Are they being talked to on a one-on-one level? Are you communicating with them and really truly listening to them? And before I stop, I just wanted to talk about the, someone brought up the metro issue and these buses being cut. And I wanted to point out that this is definitely an issue of race and class and discrimination. And those people that are hurt the most by this are obviously going to be the most vulnerable. So this is basically, essentially a racist attack on the working class. And I think you need to stand against it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers, ma'am.
That will conclude the public forum introduction of bills.
Bill number 113, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county council to execute a contract with Richard K. Brun to service counsel to the Board of Bill number 114, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with James A. Farick and Gerald Investments LP for lease of space at 11643 and 11645 Northline Industrial Boulevard for use by the Police Department. Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Verizon Wireless, VAW LLC, for lease of antenna space on the tower located at 14847 Ladue Fluffs Pressing Drive. Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5,615 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 68-70 May Department stores. Bill number 117, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending ordinance number 22,884 by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to PC 19-06 McLean Properties LLC. Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance by changing the boundary to the C2 Shopping District, the C4 Highway Service Commercial District, the C8 Plan Commercial District, and the C6 Office and Research Service District of certain land is provided herein. PC 10-19, St. Louis Children's Hospital and Washington University. Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance amending Chapter 1103, Title 11, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, is amended. Public Works and Building Regulations by repealing and reenacting Chapter 1103, the Plumbing Code. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger for Councilmember Tracus. Madam Vice Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 270, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending Title 6, Chapter 602, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, is amended. Public Health by repealing and reenacting Section 602.300, 602.320, 602.360, 602.361, 602.362, 602.363, 602.366, 602.369, and 602.370. And amending Title 7, Chapter 716, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, is amended by repealing Section 716.225, each pertaining regulation of tobacco and nicotine-containing items.
Move for adoption of Substitute Bill 1 for Bill Number 270.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 270 is perfected.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I now move for the perfection of Bill... Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 270.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill Number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill Number 82, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Bill Number 82 is hailed.
Bill Number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus and Harder. Madam Vice Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Madam Chair, I'd hold Bill Number 83 at this time on the order of business.
Bill Number 83 is hailed.
Thank you.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 84, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill 84.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 84 is perfected. Bill Number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I appreciate everyone who came out and spoke in favor of this bill tonight. I think there's more conversations we need to have. I hope this is the beginning of a very earnest conversation about getting serious about moving the needle on fair housing in St. Louis County, and I intend to have that conversation tonight. I plan to hold this bill.
Bill Number 102 is hailed. Bill Number 103, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 103.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 103 is perfected.
Bill Number 104, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 104.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 104 is perfected.
Bill Number 105, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 105.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 105 is perfected.
Bill Number 106, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 106.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 106 is perfected.
Bill Number 107, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 107.
Aye. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 107 is perfected.
Bill Number 108, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 108.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 108 is perfected.
Bill Number 109, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 109.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 109 is perfected.
Bill Number 110, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 110.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 110 is perfected.
Bill Number 111, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill Number 111.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 111 is perfected.
Bill Number 112, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill Number 112.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Bill Number 112 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill Number 99, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 99.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill Number 99, there are six ayes.
Bill Number 99 is finally passed.
Bill Number 100, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 100.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill Number 100, there are six ayes.
Bill Number 100 is finally passed.
Bill Number 101, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 101. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Bill Number 101, there are six ayes.
Bill Number 101 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolution... Madam Vice Chair, Resolution Number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 1.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Resolution Number 1, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number 1 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 2.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Resolution Number 2, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number 2 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3... Resolution Number 3, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 3.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Resolution Number 3, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number 3 is adopted.
Resolution Number 4, introduced by Councilmembers Erby and Walton Gray.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 4.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Resolution Number 4, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number 4 is adopted.
And Resolution Number 5, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 5.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, on Resolution Number 5, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number 5 is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Madam Vice Chair, item number 1, 3rd District.
Hold on the order of business and the same motion for items 1, 2, and 3.
So ordered.
Item Number 4, all districts.
Received, filed, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
And moving on to new business, Madam Vice Chair, we have one prepared order this evening.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Order Number 1 is adopted.
Any comments from the council?
I want to...
I just want to... I didn't get a chance to speak before, but I else was speaking, and great comments about our new county executive, and I want to thank you for being our county executive and stepping up. I know it's a hardship on your part with your career and such to be able to step up